All right, everyone. I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order and ask you to all stand for a collective allegiance.
A collective allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Molly, if you'd be so kind to help us with the roll call?
Sure thing. Other person, Henry. Other person, Barron.
Here.
Other person, Dean.
Here.
Other person, Cassin.
Present.
Other person, Iker.
Here.
And then other person, Valdi, and other person, Grimmer, are, excuse me, here. Mayor Atwell.
Present.
Attorney Hammers.
All right, great. Thank you very much. We'll go on to item number four, special order of business, presentation by Chief Cale regarding the reorganization of the City of Delphio Police Department after retirement of Captain Hagan, replacing captain position with three sergeants, one to be assigned to each shift. A discussion and questions regarding the City of Delphio Police Department presentation.
I don't really have a presentation for you, per se.
No slideshow, no PowerPoint?
No, no PowerPoint today. I just wanted to talk to you about the proposal I brought up during last year's budget workshop about reorganizing the department when Captain Hagan retires, whenever that will be. At the time, we were discussing that it had just been proposed to me by Lieutenant Nyren the day before, so there was still some legwork to be done. Met with Amy Buckman, it'll be essentially budget neutral to do this. It's not going to cost any more. Eliminating the captain's position when the retirement occurs and taking that pay and splitting it between three different positions that will become sergeants, one on each shift. Already negotiated a side letter with the union, making that those positions roughly equivalent to the detective position that currently exists. So it would be a raise for the those people that took those positions that were assigned to them that were promoted. But I think it really it'll be good for the department. It'll give people more opportunity for advancement. It'll increase our ability to provide supervision. Right now, with the three of us, there are some gaps during the course of the day and the night that would be eliminated. Those positions would still be in the union, so we would expect them, and I explained to the members of the department recently, they're still going to be expected to run traffic, take calls, investigate crashes, do all the things a patrol officer will do. It'll just spread the administrative functions out further than it currently is. They'll still they'll begin helping with reviewing reports and log entries, accident reports, while also providing additional leadership during the the three shifts. So are there any questions?
I've got one. When it comes to like a time like some sort of a citywide emergency, is there some hierarchy as far as chain of command goes?
Oh, yeah.
If you're not, okay, you've got that's all set up?
Yep.
Okay.
That's always been there.
I knew you would. I just was asking, just curious.
This would this would, so with the the chief captain lieutenant, that's the three of us that are supervisors. This would be chief lieutenant, three sergeants.
Okay.
So it would increase our chain of command, but it would be closer span of control among the shifts. There'd be less question, okay, who exactly should I call with this question? There's some supervisor assigned to that shift to get the question first.
Gotcha.
No, it should make those things easier as well.
For clarity, for clarity, it's one position that would wind up funding three positions.
Correct.
One one position would be divided into thirds, and those would be added on to the other three.
Yeah. It's we're not increasing the size of the department. It's not more people. It's just different roles. Taking one supervisor and making three out of that.
So I'm sorry, you're not going to have the additional staff?
We'd still have the same 16 that we fund right now. Yeah, we wouldn't be adding to 17 or more.
But you'll be recruiting an officer instead of filling cap position?
Correct. Yeah, we'll we'll do the promotions internally. The question came up during the police commission meeting about could we open it up to the outside? And theoretically, we could. And if I didn't think we had three people that could do the job, we would. But we have more than three people that could fill in as sergeants easily with very little trouble. Right now, it looks like virtually the whole department's going to try for it because they'd all call.
[laughing]
It'll be an interesting process.
Good.
I did attend the planning police commission meeting along with Phil, and just so you're aware, the commission was in support of this reorganization plan as well after they learned of it.
And likewise, it sounds like that's pretty much the entire force is where this idea came from. So they were all very much in favor as well.
Yeah. Well, you know, if you don't, if you're not intimately aware of police departments, to get everybody to agree on anything is virtually impossible. Apparently, it was a unanimous vote in favor of this when it went to the union to decide whether we should continue looking into it. So it's very well received among patrol.
Awesome.
Great. Any other questions for the chief or lieutenant? All right.
The the time of Hagan's retirement is kind of in the air still, and I'm not going to steal his thunder. I'll let him make his own announcement. But we'll probably start the process early next year so that when the time comes, we just transition and keep moving.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Great, chief.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to number five, approval of minutes of December 6, 2021, regular meeting.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, we'll move on to number six, City of Delphio's citizens' comments. Is there anyone that would like to make citizens' comments tonight? Anyone that would like to make citizens' comments? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. We'll move on to seven, the consent agenda, of which appears we have none. So we will move on to board committees and commission reports. Eight A licenses, anything? Okay, we'll move on to planning commission. Mr. Iker.
All right. Well, we've got a couple items here. Some of these are, well, a couple are old, but one of them is, item B to A is to approve the certified survey map to modify the lot line for three lots that are just right across the street here. This has been discussed. This this isn't a brand new thing. This was kind of discussed and and settled months ago, and we took action on it in October, recommended that we just just do this. And it's dealing with some boundary lines in a in an alleyway. It's if you looked in the notes, it's it's not not really super exciting, but it is accomplishing something where we're getting some development right across the street. So I'll I'll make a motion to approve. It was unanimously approved by the by the plan commission in October. So I'll make a motion to approve the CSM as presented.
I'll second that.
Great, thank you. Any discussion?
Did have one question. The back alleyway was 15 feet, if I remember correctly, and was split between the street to the north and the street to the south. Lake Street to the east wasn't split. Looks like all of that land would be allocated to the end lot, and then those lots would be made even from 50 feet each to 60 feet each. Just curious why Lake Street wasn't split.
Why, pardon me?
Lake Street wasn't wasn't split like the alley because to the east is the retention basin.
Isn't there, there's a, I believe, there's a, there's a path there. There's a public path there.
Right.
So this is, so it's like now dedicated city property. And this just this this meets it meets the function of the design of the path, and it just cleans up the the boundary there. I don't know if if you're thinking it should go someplace else, or what's the question?
The question was just how far east does that property extend?
There's there's no land grab here. I mean, there's no like, no, there's no great benefit to any individual property on that particular side, other than it's just defining the edge of the property while the path is there. I don't know.
So the eastern border looks like it's changing, though. The lots are 50/50 and I think 45, and they're going to be extended to 60/60/60? I mean, it makes sense that the lots would get it as opposed to a retention bond. I was just curious how that decision came about.
Oh, okay. We're looking at it. So, I mean, how?
Lot, lot three.
These are all the same owner when it was divided.
Right.
And this is what was proposed. And the main concern for the city was development of the land, eliminating the back alley, which the which the
Right.
property owners to the north were in favor of as well.
Sure.
And that's the only issue at hand here.
Well, it extends it to the east as well. It takes half of Lake Street. Is that half of Lake Street, or is that all of Lake Street? I guess that's my ultimate question. Where it says Lake Street at the top, that dotted line, is that the divider for Lake Street? Which is a path now. That's correct.
No, the so the we're just defining the lot, those three, those three boxes. I'm not sure.
I'm not really sure.
I'm confused. I'm confused on the question.
Each lot is now 60 feet, and the last one, I believe, is 61, correct? And they they were narrower, so they're wider than previously and even in size. So where it says Lake Street on that diagram, is that the center line of the old Lake Street?
I I don't know.
Believe it is. And whenever you vacate a street, half goes to one side and half goes to the other side. But to my recollection, none of that changed from what was existing before.
Yeah, right.
The document might be updated to be more accurate, but nothing
Okay.
was changed. No discussion took place on the question you're asking about.
And seeing this now would clarify my question. Anyways, I thought it was, so the other half could potentially go to the retention pond when they recertified over there. So, but...
It could be that I saw numerous iterations of this, or so this isn't new to me. You know, that's why I'm that I'm missing something. But this is nothing, this property's been negotiated for different developments
Right.
over the past several years. And this finalizes something that's been languishing to develop these three lots into homes. There was a condominium
Right.
proposed here that was approved, and they backed out. So now this turns it into modest sized homes.
Well, it's the best outcome I think you could get for this.
Yeah, no, this is, this was all perceived as a as a nice win, especially with the vacation of the lot, of the alley in the back, or elimination of the alley in the back.
I was just curious.
And the path has been there, so
Right.
that's not new, new, that's not a new change. What you're pointing, what you're pointing out occurred a couple of years ago, I believe. So
I know it was vacated in, I think, October 2019, so.
Yeah, so that's old, it's kind of old, old, that's done. We can't undo that. We could undo it if we tried to push it, I think.
Okay. Okay. I think I've got my answer, so.
Okay. Great. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstentions? Passes. Okay. Next one.
Okay, so this, the next one is an amendment to section 5211AA3BB of our zoning code. And this is, we talked about this a while back, and I believe, well, I know this was a unanimous recommendation from the plan commission. There was a public hearing on it. And so we're the what what this does is it defines the parameters in which we'd allow an indoor public shooting range in the city of Delphio. And the the language is in the is in the packet here. And I don't know, I guess I'd be interested in questions. This was unanimously approved for recommendation to council for approval. So I I will make a motion to approve the amendments to section 52111 as presented in the packet.
Second.
Great. Any discussion?
Just so I'm clear, this is what we discussed before, where we were talking about this versus doing the conditional use. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And and so there was language that was discussed and added to the ordinance just to describe the fact, and the intent is to ensure that the design of the building is such that should windows or loading docks or doors be oriented in a certain way that bullets don't leave. So that would be up to the the public and the plan commission scrutiny to ensure that the design of those buildings is as stated as such. And I don't know that some people thought that might be redundant, but I thought it made sense to have in there. So that's the only thing that really went on to add the add to the discussion, the council to the plan commission and back to us.
And it also restricts outdoor shooting.
Right.
Right.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second.
Can I just ask to clarify on the motion? So your motion is to approve the ordinance number 788, the ordinance amending or creating the section to allow the indoor firing ranges.
Correct.
Correct?
All righty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
Okay. And then number two C here is another amendment, and this has to do with, it's kind of in response to a proposal that may or may not include a potential for an accessory use for like senior housing or rehabilitation housing, or as a accessory use for a medical facility in B5 zoning. Based on different opportunities that may have proposed themselves in the past, maybe on the table now, seemed like a like a good use for development potential for that particular zone. And this was also, I think, a part of the
It was.
The
Economic
Economic Development Commission recommendations. And so we looked at the zoning, and there was a public hearing in this as well. And this was the one that was approved unanimously by the plan commission to come to us to amend that use in that zoning. I will make a motion to amend section 521122 of the zoning code to allow this amendment.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion?
Again, we're making a motion to approve the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. An ordinance number 789?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Going off of different notes.
All righty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. All right.
Our next one is amending the zoning district on our zoning map from the B4 general business district to B6 commercial holding properties. And this is, it's not orphaned, but it is a different zoning. This is the SEH property just to the east of Delphio Brew House and property's right along next to it. B6, B4 are close to similar uses, but B6 would provide, it'd be a contiguous contiguous use and same zoning as is adjacent to it. This just allows a little bit more flexibility to the land uses of the property. This is another recommendation from the Development Commission, I believe.
Correct.
Another one that was at a public hearing and was unanimously recommended by Plan Commission to us. I'll make a motion to approve this change in our zoning map from B4 to B6.
I'll second that.
All right. Is there any discussion?
Again, just approving the ordinance 790.
Ordinance 79, 790 is on the table.
Perfect. Thank you.
All righty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
All right. And we had a couple other orders of business that we discussed dealing with. Of particular note is a piece of property we scheduled a public hearing for on Nagawica Road on the east side of the lake for a potential development called Nagawica Heights. I encourage you to look at the plan commission minutes, because we'll have a public hearing on a potential zoning change. This again is, we're following the Economic Development Committee's recommendations. And methodically, the the goal was to go from the least complicated to the to the most complicated or potentially controversial. And what's happened along this course of events is that we've had a couple of developments that have, or at least interest, that helped us prioritize which ones come to us first. And these, we're still kind of following the smaller bite-sized morsels first. But so look, look, I encourage you to look at the schedule for meetings for the Plan Commission at the minutes, but we'll have a public hearing about a potential rezoning on the east side of the lake. It's going from, again, like similar to Hawthorne Farms in the in District Seven, from farmland to residential. And there's a developer that's very interested in and has customers lined up to say, we want to build, looking at it very seriously, and we're proposing a zoning change. Look for that on upcoming minutes.
That's great. And I'll just add it. It's another conservation subdivision. It's got over 50% open space because of that design. And the proposal has fountains and things in it to kind of give you a good rural feel.
I'm sorry, where exactly is this located?
Exactly, well, it's Nagawica, Nagawica Road, so south of Oakwood Road on east side of the lake.
So if you're heading south on Nagawica Road, and you pass Seven Seas, and it's on your right-hand side.
Okay.
When you come to the forced left turn, which sends you up the hill
Oh, that's, okay.
on Nagawica Road, it's what was considered the Joe Geeson portion of the farm.
Okay.
So it's towards the bottom. It's not at the top of the hill where the silos are and the cellular towers. It's lower, the lower portion.
Okay, yep.
Again, if that's your district or area of interest, definitely look at and or to look at the plans and give input for the public hearing. We need to hear it. All right. That would be it for Plan Commission.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Lake Welfare Committee, C. Phil?
In Lake Welfare, it was a, we didn't really cover anything that was too significant. You can take a look at the minutes. No large particular items.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Move on to D, Park and Recreation. Mr. Grimmer's not here, so we'll refer you to the minutes if there was a meeting. E, Public Works, Mr. Barron.
We had no meeting.
No meeting. Okay, F, Delhard. I know you had a meeting. I was there.
Delhard, we had a meeting, and a couple things happened. One is, I got to recommend Albrecht's Sentry for catering. Their turkey and ham was fantastic. It was their Christmas party. But before that, we had a me, a special meeting to look at a, an additional plant upgrade. Won't get too far into the weeds, the details. But what it does is it eliminates, we selected or recommended for selection one of two bidders for a plant upgrade, which helps eliminate phosphorus well below what our necessary agreed-to EPA limits are and state mandated limits are, without the addition of a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of alum chemicals into it every year. So this is something staging things to help what the plant was designed designed for to do its business. So we got about a $3 million expenditure to take place. It won't impact user fees or rates because we've got the money banked for this type of thing as a part of the design of the plant. And so we'll have construction hopefully underway sometime early in spring and then into business before our permit requires us to hit those limits. So that was the big order of business that we acted on. And aside from that, good Christmas party and forward next year. That'll be it for Delhard.
Phil, you look like you've got a question burning.
No, I don't. I was just a little envious of that. That's the water we're sending downstream away from the lake when we'd like to address some of those things in our very own lake, so.
Well, of course. But yeah, we're all connected. But and and again, if anyone has any questions about what Delhard does, or how they do it, or what these upgrades are about, reach out to to Scott and Rose.
Sounds great.
It's interesting stuff, actually.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. If you could please switch out microphones, that'd be great. Okay, we'll move on to G, Police Commission. Phil, and again, I know that happened because we were there.
Yes. Generally speaking, it was a short meeting. It had one purpose, and that would be because the police chief wanted to extend an offer to fill the vacated position that was made open earlier this year with one of the officers that didn't work out. A few things to note, the officer that, they've gotten fewer officers to apply for these positions. They're getting few and far between. They used to have tens and tens that would apply, and this time, what did they say?
About 10, I think.
10, yeah. It was a third of what it used to be. The good news is they had several good candidates. So if the first candidate didn't work out, they had a a good second candidate they were going to offer it to. And knowing that there might be some other retirements coming down the line, they thought the third candidate was also good. So they're feeling pretty good about potentially filling positions now and in the near future. So we'll see how that goes. But they did extend that offer.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, H, Library Board. Ms. Valdi is not here. I believe they did have a meeting, so I would refer you to the minutes. I, Zoning Board of Appeals, no meeting. J, Promotion and Tourism, Mr. Barron, no meeting. Okay. We'll move on to K, the Country Fire and Rescue Commission. Mr. Grimmer's not here. I don't believe they met. L, the Country Fire and Rescue Board, again, I don't believe they met. Mr. Grimmer's not here. M, Other Committees and Commission Boards. Dear Committee, Ms. Henry.
We did not.
Did not meet. Great. We are moving right along. Number nine, Unfinished Business. A, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Ordinance Number 785 and Ordinance to Repeal Section 2-169 of the Delphio Municipal Code Related to the municipal board of absentee ballot canvassers. So if I recall, we had this on our last agenda, and we pushed it out because a common council was looking for a little bit more information on it, Molly.
So essentially, about a year ago, there was an ordinance passed to allow absentee ballots to be basically processed in a separate location solely for processing absentee ballots. That was passed by the previous clerk. Since then, I had thought in certain elections it might be useful. However, once you pass that ordinance, you have to have it, and you have to process your absentee ballots in that what they call a central count location every time. Our, I've been through several elections here, and, you know, we have the one polling location. We've always had a pretty thorough process for processing absentee ballots at that location. And then once those folks are done processing, then they can kind of move back into the staffing for the day. So having an entirely separate location that we have to staff isn't useful. On top of that, there's some issues with the requirements on processing the absentee ballots when you do a central count, and that if the, the ballots are marked with a defining number, that if the correct records are requested, you could actually determine who voted that ballot. And I, for one, would prefer not to have to have that out there. I think that the voter's right to confidentiality is, you know, pretty paramount. So that's another reason that I I would like to do away with it, aside from I just don't think that it's really all that useful here. So I would ask that you pass this ordinance so that I can start this this next election series without having to have that.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 785.
I'll second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Move on to 9B, Approval of Vouchers, payable report for reporting dates 1116 through 121.
We don't have the book, and we didn't last time either.
Okay. It's upstairs. I will grab it if you guys don't mind holding on for just a moment. a moment.
Okay. I think I heard running.
Mr. Merrick, can you accept the motion in advance of?
Yeah, I'd just prefer to wait for Molly to get back here, since she's doing the minutes and stuff. We're almost done.
I see two signatures here.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So this is the unfinished business one, which would have been from last time.
All right, so I'm sorry, did we have a motion?
I moved to approve the voucher list.
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Great. Number 10, Mayor's Report. Mayor has no report. 11, New Business. A, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Ordinance Number 787 and Ordinance Repealing and Recreating Section 34-20C2B of the City of Delphio Municipal Code.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
So this is some cleanup regarding the indoor gun ranges. So the previous ordinance was specifically referencing the zoning code. There is prohibition of firearms within the city, so this is addressing the rest of the municipal code. And the exceptions, this adds the indoor gun range as an exception to the prohibition of discharging firearms.
Sounds good. Do we have a motion on that one?
Also move 787.
I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, we'll move on to 11B, Approval of Vouchers, payable report for the reporting dates of 1207 through 1217. Have a motion for that?
Also move.
Second.
Wait a second.
All righty, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. All right, I'll move on to 12, Report of City Officials, City Administrators Having a Wonderful Time on Vacation. 12B, City Clerk.
So the tax bills were mailed last week. Most people, several residents, I should say, have received them over the weekend. The one call that we've been having is, can we still pay them at Town Bank? No, you cannot pay them at Town Bank anymore. They go directly to Waukesha County. So that's about it for the taxes. If anybody does talk to somebody and they don't, they have not received their tax bill, they can find them online, or we're more than happy to print one out at City Hall if they want to come up and grab one from us. And then just a reminder, the holidays over the rest of the next few weeks, City Hall will be closed December 24th, December 27th, December 31st, and January 3rd of 2022.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, City Treasurer, no report. Council Request for Future Agenda Items. Any tonight? If you have some in the future, just let the clerk and city administrator know. All righty, I'll refer you to 13, Any Correspondence that's in the packet. And seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 7:34. Thank you, Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
At least an hour I was expecting.
Never know.